I will call this Student Success and Technology Subcommittee meeting to order at 12:34 PM. We'll first get up and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. So the agenda looks a little different than normal. This is kind of just a really great brainstorming of all brilliant minds and stakeholders. I know, I'm gonna let Joe just start off with a few of the technology stuff and then we'll dive into it, if that's okay.
So, one of the big features that I want to bring before this committee and to the school committee is trying to move forward with the safety and security of all of our students across the district, as well as providing protection for our faculty and staff. And it's kind of twofold. Part of it starts with content filtering. What we would like to do is implement, and when I say "we," I mean the technology department would like to do it, is implement content filtering that covers our devices not only while they're in school, but will extend to our devices when they're at home and pretty much anywhere where our students are using the school district's email address. As long as they're logging in, using that email address into Chrome or any of these applications, that content filter's gonna kind of go with it. We have a program called Blocksi that we use, and Dave McCarthy and myself are working with them to see what the cost of transitioning our license over to user-based will do, which will allow us to extend that filtering outside of school. So if the kids, let's say, at the middle high school who bring their devices home every day, if they're playing on those devices at home, that content filter is gonna go with them there. It's just that extra layer of security. It was brought up that we originally had something like that in place, but then it was changed due to guidance from the school committee at some point in time. I'd like to implement that back. Our kids are extremely tech savvy, and they're finding their ways to get around a lot of these blocks, and this would just allow us to add that extra layer of protection for them, both in school and out. Unfortunately, it won't stop them on their personal cellphones. If they're on the Wi-Fi, it will, but if they're using their data coverage, it's not gonna protect them then. But if we add it to user-based, if they use their devices as a hotspot and they're logging onto our devices and using our accounts, the filter will carry over. So it's just one more way to add that protection. That leads me into my next topic. Right now, we are technically a shared one-to-one slash bring your own device to school district, meaning we have the devices to cover every student from K to 12 with a device. We have those. At the elementary schools, we enforce that, but in the middle and high school, we're allowing our students to bring their own devices. So if parents bought their child a MacBook, they could bring their Mac, and if they brought them a Surface tablet or an iPad or their own Chromebook, they can bring them in, and you know, we're allowing that to happen. What it limits us with is our governing body to take ownership of that device if something was to happen. It limits us with the security measures that we can put in place because we don't own those devices. Whether it's our antivirus or malware bytes or any of these other safety protocols that we build into our Chrome, into our Google, we don't have that capability of enforcing it onto someone else's personal device. It also allows us to take ownership back and hold that child responsible for certain things when we own the devices. In addition, on a more personal level, it will allow families to know that all of the students are being provided with equal technology across the board. There wouldn't be any of the competing of, oh, you're working off of Mac and here I am on a school device because maybe at home, the finances are a little different. It takes that equation from it. It will allow everything to be fair and equitable for all students because we're providing it across the board. We're taking that responsibility away from the families to allow the students to have the opportunity from school-issued devices. So those are the two things that I really wanted to bring up, that I can't make the decision alone. I would need the approval from the administrative team and the school committee in order to move forward with this stuff, but I think it would be in the best interest of the school district to start looking at these avenues as far as providing a safe and secure environment for all of our students, K to 12.
I mean, you know, as a parent of a sixth grader, it's frustrating that I block on her phone YouTube and then she has access to it at home on her Chromebook. So that would be very wonderful, from my point of view, to keep a safe, you know, a safer environment for them here or away. I definitely would support, bring that to the full committee for a vote.
Yeah, and the same with the bring your own devices. I have a junior and a sixth grader. My junior always brought her own device, but now with my sixth grader, I started him in sixth grade, and like, you're just using the school device, and now, having gone through that, I realize it's better for her just to have the kids using the school device. It's so much easier, it makes more sense, it's more durable. It's a little heavier than a MacBook, but like, at the end of the day, like, it makes more sense for them just to have a school device.
Mm-hmm.
Any thoughts from anyone else?
I mean, I'm in support of both of these items. I know, you know, we've kind of, the content filtering has been something that really, you know, we've been advocating for, at least here at the middle high. And that, you know, we're constantly finding out new, you know, websites, new URLs, right? Like, so it's, but I have to say, the technology department's on it, right? You know, if we need that support, they're able to do those things for us while they're in the building, when they leave the building. That, you know, and so I think, you know, for the most part, I think parents would be supportive. And at the end of the day, it's the district's login. So that fact that we don't have control over that could really get us in some hot water. It already has with a couple of situations, even on a personal device, right? So the kids have their email, you know. I have two Gmail accounts on this phone, even if I'm not within the building, but I'm using that BBRSD account to sign up for something, to send an email. That's really, I think, could reflect poorly on the district, right? So I think that would be really, you know, something I personally am an advocate for, and I think, you know, middle high speaking, just because they tend to use those accounts as they get older a little bit more, and just sign up for lots of things. That, to that thought, right, was just a little bit of an extension, is the fact that other districts have much more control over their account, where they can't send, they can't get in emails from outside organizations. So that was something that, you know, I had kind of brought up loosely to Joe, just as a wonder, a thought, you know, I know it's not on the agenda, but just, it kind of goes together with that organizational piece and that filtering block. Just something to think about.
You know, so, and you'd be surprised, you know, this applies at the elementary level, the filtering piece especially. I'm still not recovered from the day that the children wanted to know where ponies came from and got video describing the entire process. It was not, those were not comfortable phone calls to moms.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do to block that.
I'm in there too. I mean, I'm discovering, well, students are discovering sites. Recently, we had a child get onto a site I would never have thought was LinkedIn and sent a message to his parent. And the parent wasn't happy, but I will have to say, we reached out to Joe and Dave within like 15 minutes, boom. And I was in email, I wasn't even at work at the time. 15 minutes, that was taken care of and blocked. So things like that. These kids have more technology savvy than I have and probably most of us have, though I shouldn't speak for you. They can get into these sites and putting up those walls, but like, I don't know what they can get into because I don't know these sites. So having those safety devices or safety precautions is important. So I agree, these things need to be in place.
I mean, just to piggyback on what everyone's saying, since we have installed Bark, I go in and I monitor some of these reports that are given, and some of the items that pop up, one of them is medical concerns. And what I've noticed is there's a trend across the board that students are not following the proper process when it comes to communication, right? So whether they're not feeling well or anything like that, they might just email mom and dad directly without even going to the nurse. So, and then a parent might show up and go, I'm gonna, I want to dismiss my kid because they don't feel well. I'm not saying that, like, that's happened, but that opportunity is there. And if we continue to slowly start implementing these, I don't wanna call them blockades, but restrictions and resistances and tighten up all the belt loops, then it's just gonna make it much easier for the management level because things will start funneling in the direction that we want them to. It'll be much better to start funneling everything in the direction we want, and eventually, everyone's gonna, I don't wanna use the term "fall in line," but everyone's gonna kind of start heading in the right direction. That's a better way to put it.
You know, the flip side of that is, we'll get better at knowing what's important. So like, I love my Bark report every week because it's like, you know, physical threats of harm, and it's like, the kids were writing on fairy tales. So there were a lot of lightning bolts, and there were a lot of sword fights. It's not what I intended for, but I would rather go through 50 of those. You know, and as I was gonna say, if we get better at it, we kind of fine-tune these systems, you know, just make our kids safer.
Must be fascinating to read, but it must be interesting.
Right? Good chuckle in the middle of the day.
It's my weekend activity.
And it makes you realize like how innocent they are in a lot of ways. It's kind of cute.
You know, I think too, like, from a parent perspective, like, you know, now at the middle school and the high school level, like, if someone isn't feeling well, I say, go to the nurse, but sometimes they don't feel comfortable doing that, so that might need to be looked at. But also, I think if we blocked external emails, we might need to look at somehow enabling parents to still be within that because like, I don't always know what's happening at school, but my daughter will email me a project she's working on to share with me. And so it would be unfortunate to lose that when we're trying not to have parents text people in the middle of the day and hopefully go to a more secure cellphone policy. I don't know how time-consuming or horrific that might be, adding parent emails into that or exclusion, if you're like, oh god.
It depends. You know, it would all depend on the direction that, or the decision that's made and how we're gonna move forward with it, right? As of right now, I believe the, it's either on organization or not, so it's either on or off. So it would be only BBRSD or not, either to allow that or not allow it. As far as knowing what's going on in school, there are other ways to allow that. If you have classroom teachers using, say, Google Classroom, you, under each student, that's a part of that classroom, you can invite guardians and turn on guardian reports, so that we, you can get weekly summaries about what's going on in the class. There are other avenues like that. So as we get, as we start moving in that direction, if that's something we decide to do, then, you know, more information will be provided as far as options, restrictions, what can and cannot happen, and all of that stuff.
Well, along with like the parent emailing, a lot of people, a lot of these middle school parents use it to like, say like, change your plans, I'm not picking you up, take the bus. Have we ever looked into, like, the elementary school have a dismissal manager? Is this, would there ever, at some point, I thought they said something at the sixth grade orientation night that they were looking into.
Yeah.
But that was predate too.
So there is a lot of ways to move forward with this, other third-party applications programs. There's a wonderful program out there called Parent Square that allows two-way conversations between the parent and the teacher. There's a multitude of different ways that we can look to move in that direction when the time comes. So if a decision's made, or if, you know, it's something that the district decides, that's what we're gonna do. Obviously, before it's completely rolled out, we have to have an alternative plan in place that's going to allow some sort of communication outside of that realm.
Yeah.
If I can, though, here's the piece, right? We don't know what we don't know. So if the, like, old school, and I still have to do it because my children go to a district where I can't email them from an external, right? So I get a call, or I have to email a secretary. So now, if that then becomes overwhelming for that person receiving those, then we go to a manager. Right now, we have no data to support that this isn't overwhelming because parents are going around it.
Right.
So we have no data to support that we need such a system. So in order for us to put something in place, we need to prove it. So, you know, like, parents, I mean, I have a senior, and they, even though she's 18, they are not allowing them to dismiss themselves. I have to email every day if she has an appointment. I have to call. She's 18.
Yeah.
So, but that's what I give you, so.
Yeah, it would be nice at a future meeting to maybe look and see what dismissal apps are being used. I know the dismissal app is being used at the ES, and then to see, you know, and then any apps that you were looking, know of, to see.
Because we get lots of emails and lots of calls, and the secretaries facilitate that really well, so.
I know the attendance policy is gonna be looked at again, I think. And I know, like, per the policy, it has to be a note dropped off to the office.
Note for caller or email.
Yes. Well, thankfully, that, yes, but per the policy, it says a note, so.
Oh, yeah, not in our handbook. Not here in our handbook.
I think that's...
I don't think so.
It's a policy.
It's one procedure.
It's not in the handbook. Yeah. So anyway, you're right, that always needs to be looked at, but I would really encourage this committee, if we want to follow the rules, right, to, in order to become either more measured or not, we gotta, we gotta tighten up all around.
Right.
Right?
Up bits and pieces, yeah.
Yeah. It's a big, it's a big, big issue with parents communicating with their children during the day.
Yeah.
Without, and it's becoming a mental health issue, big time.
Yeah.
And I can speak on that a little bit too, you know. We obviously know students have a comfort in reaching out to their parents during the day if they're under duress. We get that, but at the same time, that limits us to teach them who the staff is in the building to go to when they're under duress. There's parents that are awesome, and they'll forward the email immediately. They're like, oh, you know, I got this. And that keeps us in the know, but also, we don't know how often it's happening, and we're not in the know. And we're unable to mitigate something that's going on in the moment and to teach those students those problem resolution skills of, this is how you feel right now, who's your go-to, what's your coping skill? Obviously, the comfort's there, it's a quick text to the people that are familiar, but it's also teaching them the people that are familiar in the building to go to when there's an issue happening.
The thing with the nurse, when you're sick, it's very easy to bypass and call your parents.
Can I, at the elementary level, and I don't know if you have this issue, we've had three issues with that this year because they do not have, we stole your three strikes and you're out procedure, that they cannot bring in their phones. They have their phones, but they're in their bag. If we catch them with them, the first one is, the teacher takes it away. The second one is, they come to me, the parents have to get it. Third one is, it doesn't come in at all. And that has worked. That started at the beginning of the year, and they really don't. But we've had children, one used their smartwatch, which got by us because that's a Bluetooth device that's not supposed to be there, and they reached out to the parent just in the last few weeks. And that was a conversation I had with them when I found out, the nurse found out, and I said, hey, we can't do that. She spoke to them, I spoke to the parents, and they have to go through the nurse at this level. Where we're finding it is Bark, Joe, a couple went up, that health was alerted, that they were reached out to their parent. One parent did push back and say, have you gone to the nurse? Have you gone to the bathroom? Have you done that? And it was just me talking to those parents and the students, saying, we go through the nurse here. And it's really subsided at this point, but it was only three, so it really hasn't subsided. It really hasn't gone up to the level that, because they can use their phones here. Correct.
Guys.
Yeah. So it's a different, I don't know.
I'd just say, it feels like we're moving into the next part of our meeting. Do you wanna wrap?
Sorry.
No, no, but, yeah, no, so I mean, parenting buy-in would be the end of that, like, to, you know. Yes, well, yes, so we could pop into the cell phone free refresh day since you were here too.
Sure, yeah, I was just... So I shared with some folks that were, I knew that were gonna be here today. I think if you go on the website, that's probably the easiest way, since it's not down. Just, I just put, all I did was, I took the survey data and I just copied and pasted those.
Did you want to see something on the website?
No, we, no, 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 Ms. Ford was just giving you the agenda, that's all. So, yeah, I mean, the data, you know, I think I shared it out to most people that are here. We had, on refresh day, I was not here, but Ms. Ford was, so I don't know exactly how it was rolled out, so you may want to be able to just kind of give them a little background on the phone-free lunch. Was that, you know, kind of, that, those were some of the weeks I was out, because my mother passed, so just trying to remember exactly how it got rolled out that day or that week.
I don't know if I can speak to Fidelia on how it was rolled out.
Please excuse the interruption. All students who were scheduled for gym at this time must go out and have attendance taken. All students 11th and 12th grade who were supposed to be in gym should go outside towards the track where you are expected. You will be marked absent if you do not go out. Thank you.
They're in the outdoor, sitting in the gym. They're just, they're finishing.
Oh, they're finished. Oh. During refresh day, I was overseeing a presenter in the auditorium, so I wasn't able to really engage or understand, you know, what was going on, but the students were pre-worn that, hey, this is something we're gonna try, we're gonna roll out, we want to test it out, because I think it's, we start small and then we move to a larger expectation. You know, for some kids here, it doesn't seem like it's an issue, but for some kids, it's like an extension of their person always having that quick access to the cell phone.
Yeah, so we had talked about it, we, every Friday, we, most Fridays, really, we have, like, you know, student support meeting where we, the administration meets with the guidance staff, and we had talked about it, and that was kind of when we decided, hey, refresh day's coming up, we brought it up to the subcommittee. This would be a great opportunity for, to give this kind of a try, you know, do some data. So all of the counselors were aware, so I believe it might have been Ms. Rodman, the department chair, and Ms. Pigarel that kind of talked to the kids at each lunch that day. And then Ms. Square put together a survey with them to get the data that I shared with you. And feel free, Jess, if you want to share it with.
Yeah, I shared it to you.
Parent.
Your email, Joe.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Yeah, we can plug it right in and put it up there. But it was interesting to look at, you know, the students almost seemed a little bit unfazed, was my big takeaway, you know. Many people opted to try it. It was about 59 responses. So if you, you know, that's...
Terrible.
That's probably, depending on how many they had for lunch, how many, trying to think of the population of just our high school students.
Probably one class.
It's a fourth, it's a fourth, you know, probably of our high school population that had that. Yeah, so the phone-free lunch, how did it affect your ability to engage with friends or classmates? I thought this was interesting. So many of them just didn't seem phased, like, it was, I didn't have it, but it didn't seem to affect me one way or the other, you know, and I felt less connected without my phone, that 18%. You know, our lunches, just to note, and I'm gonna really try not to, I'm just gonna try to share the data and not interject, but our lunches are 30 minutes long. It takes an average student 10 to 15 minutes to eat, so I'm not gonna, you know, I'm just putting that out there, okay? Did participating in a game or activity during lunch help reduce the feeling of being without your phone? So this was a little bit different. I thought this was kind of interesting. This was really mixed. You know, the highest percentage, that 37%, said I didn't feel like I needed to participate in any game, that, you know, without my phone, I was fine. You know, the 32% there, we talked, we didn't do any activity. The 20%, I didn't participate, but I would be interested in trying this time. And then, like, one or two of each of the others, right, not a difference, I did, you know, I did participate, I felt the same, those type of responses. So really interesting that, like, it was cool, it was, again, to me, it kind of speaks of indifference, but that's just my interpretation, like, yeah, that's cool that there were games there, but whatever. Now, again, just giving you another piece of facts, we tend to have other things going on at lunches, say, one or two times per week, all right? So there is often times a game happening in here with students, right? That is something that happens. We do have lunch with a counselor, you know, once a cycle. We do have lots of clubs meet during lunch. So just to put that out there, there are other things, so it wasn't like this game opportunity might have been something completely new to them, that could have been why the data's this way. The next one up here, it's very colorful. What was the most notable change in your lunch experience without your phone? They missed it. They, you know, they feel like it's an, you know, an extension of who they are, this 27%. But the 16%, right, I felt more relaxed and present, you know, nearly 17, right, 60.9. So that's great, you know, I thought that was definitely a positive takeaway. And then there was a bunch, just of every color of the rainbow there. It was the same as usual, it felt the same, I felt the same as every other day, those type of add-ins that they, they put into the survey there.
Being bored is the first step to creativity, too, so.
Yeah, I know, right. Would you be open to, I'm sorry, would you be open to having more phone-free lunch opportunities in the future? So no is the big one. No, I prefer having my phone. But the 25%, you know, would love to hear more on what those adjustments might be, right? Maybe with some adjustments, like, what would that look like? Again, just a little hypothesis, I would say, if we can have our lunches the last 10 minutes of lunch, I mean, I, because that's when we see them, right? That's when we see them. They're engaging, they're eating, they're not necessarily, unless they're alone at a table, which does happen, and it's like a comfort, hey, if I'm alone at a restaurant and I don't have a newspaper, that's what I'm doing too, right? Not that I've ever been alone in a restaurant, but that would be lovely. But anyway, let's get back to the point, being here, right? It would be interesting to see what those adjustments were. I'd love to know some more information about that from them, you know. And then, you know, again, a couple of other just add-ins, I don't really care, indifferent, you know, all these. So I just basically put those takeaways on the next slide there. Those were my takeaways, or I'm sure you can interpret other things there too, but just kind of the majority of the students reported, they didn't feel the optional phone-free lunch affected them. That was the biggest one for me. Students had mixed feelings about whether or not they felt games affected their feelings or not. Students reported several noticeable feelings about the absence of their phone. That was the one that was really interesting, you know, and I thought reflective, at least they kind of thought about it, like, you know, you know, what did it feel like without it? The majority of students reported that they would prefer to have their phones during lunch, but a quarter of them reported being open to the idea with some adjustments. And I thought it was interesting that there was more than just a couple, right, 8% were indifferent. They were like, whatever. So, yeah, I mean, you know, not, you know, you definitely could make your own, you know, your own, you know, takeaways, your own hypothesis, but I thought it was at least an interesting start to see, the students really love those phones, you know. We all do, that's definitely, you know, a part of who they are. But I will say, the engagement level, Mr. Ganem actually had to help out today for lunch duties. He didn't have to, but he volunteered, which was great. But, you know, he's like, these lunches are long. Yeah, they are, but it's a teacher contract piece, right? So, and again, it's middle high, so we don't have that opportunity with staffing. We would have to be very strategic with schedule in order to have, similar to like the elementary schools, I don't know if you do 20-minute or, you do a whole 30-minute lunch.
Same reason.
And a 30, and a 30-minute recess?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was like 20 and then the 20-minute, okay. So, yeah, right, so that's a total 20-minute because of just staffing, right? There's not enough to coverage, right, so.
So I mean, just, I just, today noticed that there were some kids outside, I mean, using those, like, are kids encouraged to go outside?
High students can go outside, yeah, to eat.
Okay, but middle school not?
No. And interesting because we were talking about that yesterday, and one of the reasons is, is the sound travels tremendously. Middle school students are, I mean, to be honest, we've had complaints about the preschool playing outside because it's just, when the windows are open, it is distracting. You know, I've had students, teachers, parents alike being like, oh my gosh, I don't know how anyone can concentrate with that yelling, just... can concentrate with that yelling, just the, the area and because it's.
The hallway.
Yeah, it's just, it, all that sound goes up. So we were talking about it yesterday, um, you know, Ms. Quer brought that up, you know, gosh, would it be? I said, I have no problem with them out. I love kids being out and eating and all, but she was, ugh, I'm remembering now, it's the noise. We had a big issue with the noise. They're louder, if their voices are higher, if there's more of them. It's, they're not necessarily being awful, they're not necessarily saying bad things. I think you probably heard me trying to get their attention today. They're not being, they're not doing anything terrible, they're slow. You know, they got a lot of energy and, um, so it's a long time to be expected to sit. So that's another whole issue, right?
Right.
But for the high school students, I think that's where, if I were to, and that, this is not really to do with data, necessarily just from my own observation, that time during lunch at least with the phones ends up being, unless they're sitting alone, um, unless they do not want to engage, they really do engage. And then after they eat, and then it's also interesting to note that I've seen them engage with the phone. Actually, we have a group of kids, I think I told you that played chess on their phones? And they're like, right, and then there's, there's this like, hey, did you see this? So whether we like that engagement or not, it is an engagement.
Please excuse the interruption. Will Eli and Alexis please return to manufacturing? Eli and Alexis, please return to manufacturing. Thank you.
Now, I could just call them on their phone now. So anyway, that's, um, that's all, you know, again, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't here that day. I heard refresh day went really, you know, quite well, um, but at least Ms. Quer was able to gather a little piece of the data.
And just to extend off that a little bit, when it comes to what areas of the building are a no-phone zone, we really try to limit students using their cell phone in the counseling office too.
Yep.
Just so they are realizing they're in a quiet, safe environment right now, you can be who you are. There's fidgets, there's coping skills, there's people nearby, so they're not like, I'm going to do all this right now. You know, which is hard. Again, it's their familiarity, it's a comfort, but we really try to discourage that. And there too, and kids typically are very responsive to that. Um, lunch with a counselor is always super enthusiastic. I think the trend is growing with those kiddos, but again, they're middle schoolers, so they don't have access or they're not supposed to have access to their phone, um, during lunch with a counselor, but they're engaged. So I think it's like, when we become more black and white of when you can have it versus when you cannot, they eventually start to fall in line. Of course, there's the kids that are going to ask the 21 questions and show their curiosity, but I find that when you do redirect them, they are mostly, you know, respectful of the expectation that you're setting forth.
How, how do we support that at the elementary level? Because we jumped on this day and ours looks different because we don't have technology at that level. Um, we called it, we called it a cafe story starter day. And at our level, it looked a little different. We, we put music in there, which we do on very special occasions. They're allowed, so typically at BES anyway, K will sit on one side, first grader will sit on the other side. They were allowed to go across. Um, we played music and we had story starters, which were visuals, because, you know, there are different reading levels. And that was the same for second and third, fourth and fifth. And we had to plan strategically so they had pictures that they could say, would you rather? And we helped them, so the guidance team was there, so my school site was there, my adjustment counselor was there, um, the BCBA was there, and teachers really helped with that. But they loved it. Now, again, different age levels, um, no technology, how can we build upon that? Because your middle schools, the sixth graders aren't using technology and, and you didn't, I didn't change for them. Is there anything that we could do at this level to, if we're, if we're going to, you're going to keep on doing this type of day? How can we support, can we support?
Well, I guess the question for school committee members is, where are you looking to go with this?
Well, as an individual school committee member and a parent of a second grader and a sixth grader, I think I would support 100% getting rid of cell phones. Um, but as you know, it's a committee decision and ultimately a policy. And then also financially, a decision too, if we were to go with pouches or something along those lines, if we decided to go with that. So, um, hopefully it's a non-issue, I would say, um, trying to do cellphone free lunches. In my hope, my, as an individual person on the school committee.
I, I don't like cell phones in schools, personally. I'm not sure the group as a whole agrees. So I don't know where we'll land, but personally.
Well, I guess, you know, for me, and I've said this before at admin meetings, um, we know the detrimental effects that phones are having on children. Children in our school, children in this school. I mean, it's not just like, you know, it's been for the retention, no. Girls are hurting themselves at incredibly high rates. Boys are committing suicide at much, much higher rates. Mental health crises continue to grow because we've done this crazy thing to young children. We gave them smartphones. And then occurs that we have to torture each other with them. You know, there's no good reason for children to have phones in schools, other than it's convenient. You know? Parents worry, well, what if something happens? If, you know, crazy gunman come? Well, that's not really my biggest worry. My biggest worry is, what if your kid gets wildly depressed and needs to be hospitalized? Because that's happening at wildly high rates. We know all this stuff. And I, I said with my colleagues, I don't, I was just high as, but it's, it's a moral dilemma. Let's call it bad. We know what we should do. We know there shouldn't be phones in schools. It's just, that's a huge push. Be a huge push for parents, be a huge push for kids. But if we're here to do the right thing. And that would extend to watches, you know?
Yeah.
But again, this is not something that we can decide. Plenty of research out there, plenty of data.
Yes, but having parent, uh, backing leads us right back into our next agenda item. So at BES, I guess in the fifth grade, I learned that there were quite a bit of issues online socially. And, um, so parents kind of spoke up to Cindy and wanted an event about cyberbullying.
Yes. So I can talk a little bit about that. Um, it, it started with a couple of parents that brought some concerns, um, about a group chat that their child was in. Um, we started talking about it, um, they recruited some other parents and then, it was happening at night. It was happening on the weekends. Obviously, we don't have the phones in schools, so we don't have that happening, but it, it comes into school because these kids have peer relationships. So if we don't address it, um, it does affect their day. So I reached out to Sergeant Ryle, um, Boylston Police Department, and he was a very busy man, um, but more than willing to help out. Um, and we had a, a parent night come. Um, he, he brought a friend, um, forgive me for not remembering his name. Officer, I'll remember it, I'll remember it. Um, sorry if you're watching. Hope you watch this later. But anyway, he put out this presentation and, and there was probably about 25 parents there with questions. We talked about different scenarios, um, really for resources. We talked about Bark, which, that was the first time I've used it, was this year, thanks to Joe bringing that to the district. Um, and we got to talk about what that looked like, but other resources. Um, I also had a conversation, um, with the police chief earlier in the year, and I'm going to tell you, I'm a, a mom. My children are around from 23 to 33 right now, um, and what these children are exposed to now, compared to when my children were teenagers, is far more advanced. Um, and I think they pulled a couple of things over on me back in their day. Um, but he is so on top of things as well with his own children. And, um, he's the one that actually sent Sergeant Ryle to me. Um, so they gave a really, really, um, I think informational night for parents, opened some eyes, got people talking. From that, a couple of things happened. I had a lot of parents reach out to me after the fact, um, telling me they looked at their children's phone. Um, you'd be surprised how many children, how many parents do not look at their children's phone. And I use my own children a lot in my experiences. I always looked at my children's phone, um, phones, because I paid for them. And I, they knew that I could do that. I will get into all the stories of those things. Um, but parents started looking at their children's phones from that night, uh, from conversations that we had. It was really eye-opening. Um, some parents were shocked at some of the things that they saw that their children were exposed to. Um, from that night, they are asking for a night with parents and their children, which I think would be huge. So we talked about the district night as well, which was last night, correct? But, um, having the children there with them, just to kind of teach them what they can be exposed to, but having the resources to be able to speak if there, you know, something happens with them. So I think it was very beneficial. You were there, anything you want to add?
Yeah, no, so I'm just here in support of everything we're talking about. I have a second grader and a fifth grader, and, um, huge concerns for the whole phone thing, huge. And I think a lot of parents just don't have the maybe awareness, or not everyone's on the anxious generation movement just yet. So, sorry, I'm just getting over a cold. So I think, starting with going into the next thing Jessica wrote down, is the, the toolkit, the new norms. The younger we start here, the better it's going to get year to year. So my focus right now is currently my children are at elementary level. I do think we can turn this around. Um, big advocate for a bell-to-bell, like, like John said, just no phones, like, take it away. Like, I, I really can't stress that enough, but also educating, like with these nights that Cindy's having, I think are wonderful. Um, you know, my 10-year-old was exposed to a pornographic video this school year. I had to have talks with him that are completely not age-appropriate. Brown Boylston, yes, we have this beautiful little bubble here, we are not, it, it's touching everyone. So I really, um, I'm passionate about this as a parent. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of parents who, um, who also would, are on board with this, having a new norms advisory board, I'd be happy to help out with, and that toolkit that was sent out. Um, I think a lot of parents are going to be on board. Now, to take phones away from like a high schooler, middle schooler, I don't, that's probably a lot more difficult. So for me, and, and where I could place my, you know, help would be new norms. Having it be normal to not see a phone in a child's hand. We had an awesome dance at the school, February, March. Every single female student had a phone in her hand, every single one. And it was just like, super eye-opening, that it's just normal. It's just normal to have a phone. So let's change that. Let's have it be the new social norm to not see a phone in their hand, because it is basically a drug in their hand. And we have all this information now and, um, just very, very passionate, just because of, and I think that our girls are more at risk, um, than our boys. And, um, I, again, I have an eight-year-old and I worry. I worry about what the next few years are going to be like for her. So what can we do now, right now, with the information we have? We have a bunch of passionate parents. I, you probably won't find a teacher who would support having a phone in the school, right? So let's just do it. Let's, what do we got to do to do this?
And I want to add something to that, because where I'm seeing an uptick, and I don't know if you are, are the buses right now.
Oh, yeah.
So if you think about those buses, and this is what I'm dealing with daily, the, once they're out, that's an extension of our school day, is the buses. So those, those phones should not be on the buses, but the bus drivers are keeping those kids safe and driving. They cannot see what's going on in those seats, but I'm getting caught. These kids are taking pictures, they're using filters and they're taking pictures of other kids. It, it's extending into their day that way, so I'm trying to take care of that as well. But that's hard for the bus drivers. And by the time I hear about it, somebody's already taken a picture and exposed, nothing, it's, it's a Snapchat. It might be like puppy dog.
Embarrassing, they try to embarrass.
And they try to embarrass, but they're showing the younger kids, so the, the bus drivers need that, hey, phones away, and I'm trying to tell them, but I'm not on the bus. So that's something else that's happening now.
You find out about it when the kid hits the other one on the bus and then you find out it was because they were taking pictures of them.
Yeah.
And it, that goes all the way up.
Are you seeing that on your buses?
Yeah.
So the big thing that I'm, I'm hearing, just on, on my side is, it's, we're, we're talking about a, a, a general culture change amongst the district, right? So if we look to roll something like that out, it, it's going to take many, I said, I use the word many, but it's going to take years for the decision that we make to take full effect, right? So we already have the kids now that are used to it. There's going to be the resistance from them. If we start with the younger age groups and we eliminate them altogether, then that's the norm that they know. So when they come to sixth grade, they still know that norm, that the phones are, we shouldn't have them out, right? At the end of the school day, fine, but it, it's going to take that time for that norm to build up, to get it across the whole district. It's not some, we're not going to see, we're not going to make a decision and then see that change overnight. It's going to take time for that decision to roll across, just like as we're seeing the educational progress of the kids that were affected by COVID, it, it's starting to, to phase out a little bit, um, but it's still there. We're going to see those ramifications and it, the resistance or the, um, the kids being sneaky about it, that's going to be there for, for years to come, if it's the decision that we go with. Whether I put in, or the technology department puts in these more, these filters, it's still going to take years for that to take into full effect, or the kids like, oh, they know that what I'm looking at, they see what I'm doing. And the, the word gets passed down, oh, you can't do that, right? Or don't, my kids at home are in fear of searching things up on their school computer because they know that their district is looking at it. So if they have to look up something that in their own mind might seem inappropriate, they won't do it on their school computer. They'll come to me, hey dad, can you look this up for me? Because they don't want it to be flagged on their device. So it, and it takes time for that to, to come in, to, for that to be seen across the district.
Jessica, can I jump in for a second too? Sorry. We, we just came from the district attorney, right, and talking to us about the cell phones and the whole algorithm that these companies are now using now, right? And channeling our kids, right? It all becomes, they, the, the millions of people they hire to just take all that data, how many times a day are our kids looking at the phone? How many times a day are they even reaching it up? Like, it was amazing presentation he just gave of that. And I know we need time ourselves very well, with all of this stuff going on, but it was very timely. But the number one thing he says right now, this generation that we're working with, is their parents, right? Their parents are the ones that we see as, even in the schools, that they're on their phones in the parking lot. They're on their phones as they're, they're, they're driving sometimes as well too. And so for us to want to be able to do this, we got to get the buy-in from the parents. 100% buy-in from the parents, uh, because that will avoid the kids bringing the phones in school and hiding them by putting them somewhere so they don't get in trouble. It's got to start, and I, I know we can do this together, but it really is going to start at the home, right? And I'd be very curious to see how many parents would really be in favor of this, right? And that, because we really need it to come from the home first. And I'm saying, this is not going to happen.
Yeah, so I mean, part of the Attorney General's cell phone and social media and tools toolkit, like at the very end, talked about parent buy-in. And so that's why I invited, you know, a parent today. Um, but, you know, I think there's the wait until eighth movement, which is wait until eighth grade for a cell phone. There's the let grow, which is, um, an independence movement, which I think can help anxiety. There's a lot of research there. If kids can actually go into a store and buy some by themselves, they feel more confident and less anxious.
Sure.
So I think getting that parent buy-in and doing some of those community nights and maybe incorporating some of those things into those nights as well, can help us kind of culturally change what's going on and put a stop to basically these cell phone companies, you know, controlling us and changing our kids' brains.
And, and the extension of what they're using their phones in school to them eventually using them with their driving, right? You want to see some powerful videos that the district attorney just shared with us right now for those kids was very, very powerful. I'll just leave it at that. So it's, I, I appreciate listening, John said about them on their buses, but then when they reach up to high school, that goes from being on their phones to being in their cars, right? And it is where we are, watching videos like we just saw there in the stats that he's telling us that are taking place right in the Worcester County, right? The accidents that are taking place and the, the fatal accidents that are happening because people are on their phones. And the majority of the time, he's telling us, it's not the people that are on the phones, but it's the people that are driving down the highway in the opposite directions of the people that are on their phones as well too. So, um, it's, it really is an extension, sorry.
And I, no, I just moved over here so you don't have to do that.
I appreciate that. Sorry.
And if I could add, so at the fifth to sixth grade transition meeting, I, you know, I'm, because we can't necessarily control what's happening on the buses. You know, we can address behaviors and everything, but we as school communities are tasked with providing so much oversight. Oversight is really impossible, you know? And so my, I, I love the wait until eight, I love that. But young kids don't need smartphones. I, I'm all about get the kids, you know, footphones, dumb phones. And everybody's like, oh, that part. There, if there are people to purchase them, there will always be a market. So if there's more people plotting them, they will produce more smartphones. Because I understand that parents are resistant to, you know, buying into this because they're like, well, what if they need a ride? Or what if they need me, or what, you know, me? because they're like, well, what if they need a ride, or what if they need me, or what, you know? My parents do, I mean, they love me, but you know, they're like, so yeah. As long as I was home, like dark.
Here's a quarter, no.
It would made it work, right? We used to meet people at like Fenway Park or places, and we still just made it work, right? As opposed to now, like.
Right, everybody feels the need to be so connected. So I think it would be a powerful thing to, you know, to have the parents feel comfortable with that. My child can get attention to me if they, they wouldn't miss the bus, or whatever that need is for the parent. But, you know, strip the phone and the social media aspect of it. And you know, I'm a huge proponent of, you know, the flip phones, flip phones.
It's also the generation that we're creating right now, that we're working with right now, their phones. When they have their kids, where is an ending, right? Unless we do something. There are some districts in the state that they're putting a lot of money into making this stop, right? Kids skill, can bring their phones in, because I get it, right? As parents, we also like to know, are our kids safe? I'm going to pick you up, right? There are a lot of positive things that we'll hear from parents about that. But we just didn't hand it over here, before I left, we bought those pouches, right? Kids came in, put them in the pouches. I just went recently to a comedian, a comedy show, right? You bring your phone, and they lock them up, and all of that stuff happens. We go to the movie theater now, they lock your phones out, you have no cell service. When you're in the sort of other options to have as well too, that we need to be looking at. I don't know, again, parent buy-in, so they don't have their phones, but I don't know if we can stop that as much, because this generation of families now, that's where they've grown up. I'm a little bit older, so my parents didn't have. Like, trying to teach my mother how to use a cellphone was a feat of myself, right? But now this generation is much more attuned to that and using that. But is there a way that when they come to school, if they have their phones, we get parents wanting to have them, in school, they become what we call blocks, right? They become bricks, there's nothing to it. It's a way to look at it as well too.
Yeah, I mean, I think a wonderful way, you know, like Cindy's saying, have a parent family evening where kids and parents come and listen, and you know, maybe we'll talk about the wait until eighth, or, you know, the let grow. Um, you know, and then of course anxious generation too, and all the data that's very frightening about how we're changing our kids' brains, and, you know, because I think I gave in to a cellphone the spring of fifth grade, because she was being left out of these social conversations. Um, but if all the parents had said no, you know, then that wouldn't have been an issue, so.
What's the reality of actually getting a bell to bell plate? Like, what do we have to do? With like an exception of flip phones, my son has a flip phone. Hundred percent that is the answer to all of this.
Yes, for the second graders, that's easy, but when you get there.
Yeah, that is the problem, right? Because if I looked it up, we were talking, Amazon, like eighty bucks.
How much?
Eighty dollars. Or you could spend four hundred dollars on a smartphone that's poisoning your child's brain. The decision is not.
No judgment, no.
Even last night, we had Julia present for the district attorney. We had, besides myself, there was one other parent that was on there, right? So that was a little disappointing, right? Um, so we videoed it, right? And so we're going to put it on the website as well too. So we also got to look at time, right? So I'm sitting in my office watching that video. As I'm looking out the window, there are about two hundred kids out there having soccer practice, right? So probably timing wasn't the best part, April as well too. But we memorialize that, and I'll go on the district website so people can see it. Uh, but that was the powerful thing as well too, what's happening with these kids' text messages, what they're seeing, paying attention, looking at as well too. So between that, and what Joe Early just gave today, with two great videos that will be able to help us with this information, we're trying to give on the parents as well.
I mean, if they can go out in the newsletters, you know, people do open them up and read them and watch, you know, look at stuff. So it would be nice to proactively send that out.
That's what Nicole and I are working on the next newsletter, and that information we put out there, that goes to our website for that. I'm so excited.
All right, thanks, Adam.
Uh, yes, so, yep, we checked off that one too. Um, so, no, 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 it's wonderful, it's, I love this organic conversation we're having. Um, so I think, you know, in terms of like maybe some action items for the things that we've already talked about, you know, maybe considering family nights at each of the schools for those different developmental levels. Um, and then really trying to get the parent, parent support for those. Um, because I think it's there. Um, and I think it really has to be supported from the parents, not just a top-down.
I think we need to find a better way to reach a broader group of parents. I think we're in a little bit of an echo chamber, and then we're, like, the people that are going to come to these are the ones that are already on the same page. It's a matter of outreach beyond the people that feel the same.
You want to bring them in, just tell them we're bringing their cell phones.
Well, we talked about the forum, that will, like, if we were to do a forum, and then, you know, have various options and ideas, like, when people start hearing, this is on the table, then it will bring people out, and maybe it's a better opportunity to have a bigger conversation. But I think, like, as I was saying, you have to bring the parents in if you want to be able to enforce anything at the schools, because the kids are just going to keep bringing the phones in and hiding them. And then if the school takes a phone and calls the parent, and the parent doesn't care, because the parent wanted them to have their phone, we're.
Then you got a nice desk phone.
I mean, as far as the data, we're all saying we think parents are in support. I don't necessarily think that at this level, right, which Mr. Gann kind of alluded to. So, I mean, I don't know what we're thinking, because we know pockets of people. I mean, to me, a great step would be, what's the data out there? Where are, where is our community? And then, where in, you know, I don't know what that might look like, you know, what the subcommittees want to do with school committees, but to me, that would, you know, or do we not care about that data, and the school committee goes a certain way to go forward with policy? But to me, it would be, I very much agree with John. You're not going to, I love the idea of the meeting, Cindy, but that's not going to work beyond sixth grade, up here.
I think probably a forum more at the high school, probably.
Yeah, and we have to be very strategic with that. Uh, I would caution just having it being open, and it, I mean, it would be, you know, we have daily issues with parents fighting us on the fact that we don't have, allow middle school to use their phones. Daily.
You'd have to have the right people at that forum, right, to be able to get, you have to have like the district attorney, right? Um, and him giving those videos, like, our kids in the young grades could not watch those videos, right? We wouldn't watch them, see them. High school, going to prom, those were powerful videos for those kids. Um, so we have to look at that. The other part, that our attorney would want us of, is the minute you take a phone from a student, you own possession of that phone, right? And we've been in the district before where something happened, the teacher lost it, whatever, happens along the lines. Once we take that phone, the financial cost, as we said, eighty dollars for a flip phone, but no one has the flip phones, or a few at least have them, there are thousands of dollars that we're taking possession of. All it takes is one to be dropped, a loss, and then we own that liability of that as well too. So there's so many components of that, I just don't have it on the table. But we don't have to recreate the wheel here, there are districts now that are doing this. So I think our real moment should be like, okay, how are you doing this? What did you do? And how's it working for you? There are some that are doing no phones, some that are doing partial, right here in the state of Massachusetts. And I think the school committee has the most power to be able to reach out to those school committees, because it goes through them and say, what did you do, right? How do you do it? And how did you roll this out so you have that? Uh, but there's a little bit of all of that happening right here in the state of Massachusetts. I mean, it's Littleton or Lexington, I could be wrong, or one of those Ls, that completely is not using cell phones at all. Uh, but we need to reach out to them and say, how'd you get that?
Yeah, so I think in the past, I forget in which forum, but you know, we talked about having, having maybe a member of each of those schools come and talk about the experiences, you know, good and bad of each of those different three policies within that toolkit that were suggested. Um, and you know, have a speaker, maybe the attorney general if we can. Um, but I, I think starting that conversation, as difficult it may have, people are very polarized in those opinions too, but I think starting that is really important, because we do need to come up with something um in terms of that eventually.
I think a lot of districts just this past year made, started putting things in action. And so at the end of this year, we'll have more feedback on like what's working, what's not. Like, I had heard from somebody that in Northborough, they're using the pouches, and they didn't assign a pouch to each kid, they have a bucket of pouches at the door. And so all of a sudden, they started getting, going missing or getting lost, because the kids would cut the expensive pouch to get their phone out. So they're.
But phones aren't a problem.
Yes, but yeah.
Not addicting at all.
So, I mean, let's, let's use the feedback, let's let somebody else find out the hard way. That asks like, jump and find out that.
But the flip side is like, not be afraid to do something hard, just because it's hard.
And it's hard to adapt to that change. To everyone's point, who I actually sat on the cellphone panel, I just pulled up my notes right now, back in October, and it was schools talking about their experience of doing it right now, and what it feels like. I know Buxton, which is a private boarding school in Western Mass, they're on their third year of being cellphone-free, so they're navigating it. There is a high school in Dalton, Massachusetts, they are now two years phone-free. And they initiated based on teacher requests to minimize distractibility and to focus and heighten time on learning. Um, Brockton High School, which is a very diverse, very populated high school in Massachusetts, this is their first year going phone-free, and they actually started rolling it out the year prior just to like pre-born people, and to start gently. And they actually had a principal and student from a high school in Russia. So globally, people are looking into this right now, just because they're seeing the impact on mental health, to your point. The anxious generation is a wonderful novel, because it really speaks volumes to what is going on. Everything is instant gratification on the phone right now. That's great if we're going somewhere and we need directions, but then you lose the ability to really enhance and build that face-to-face communication with people. So it's out there, I'd be happy to share these notes that I took with everyone too, but it's definitely out there. I think people are trying it out, but it's the change, and it's getting out of our comfort zone to talk about an uncomfortable topic.
Just to clarify for people who might be listening at home, it's not a novel, it's not a fiction, so.
I knew that was bothering you.
Too many years teaching that to third graders.
So the other thing I wanted to know too, at the high school level, how much of it is it a tool? How much are our phones our tool?
That's what I was going to say.
We haven't bought calculators, we haven't bought any of those stuff in years that we used to have to buy before, right? Resources and all that, so how much of it at the high school level is it used as a tool?
Well, I was going to, you know, that's exactly what I was going to say, and where we, again, whether it's collecting data, or you know, there's a piece that we want to see how other schools are operating, but then there's a piece to see what, how are we using them? Because, you know, somebody had made the comment, all teachers would be so happy.
No, yeah.
In budgetary measures, right? Not only are we talking pouches, we are talking calculators, we are talking cameras, major recording devices. We are having students create huge, beautiful projects on their phones. So, I mean.
It is a skill set.
Right, exactly, right? So there's a learning piece there too. Uh, but so, just, you know, just throwing that out there, it's, it is very different at each level. Um, and they're being used very differently at each level. Others still, you know, even, you know, personally, putting my parent hat on, right? So I have a sixth grader, and I have a senior, I have an eighteen-year-old. And um, you know, that sixth grader uses the phone way too much at home compared to my eighteen-year-old. All the, a different time too, right? Right, different time, but they both got their phone when they got into middle school, because there's no payphones anymore. Like, that's another thing, budgetary-wise, what else would we have to do? Do we employ somebody longer in the office? Do we have additional phones to call? So these are just things to, I just, I do, I think we definitely want to take a look at what other districts are doing, but I would open the idea to the committee to say, what, what, what are we using them for now? And what would that look like, you know? Because every district is very different, as far as what they already have in-house for resources.
So there was a survey, I think, three years back, at the very beginning of maybe my, my time on the school committee, that you had done with the teachers and the staff. And it was surprising, to us at least, that there was a lot of pushback on getting rid of them.
It was a cellphone one?
I think that was Kara.
Yeah, I actually just pulled it up, it was in May of twenty twenty-three, and it was a cellphone use inquiry. I can see what I can pull up.
The other part is, I was just looking over some IEPs, right? Because we're in, we're feeling, conversation we're having with some families, that on their IEP, it says they're using their phone, and it's flushing. And they have the ability to be able to use their phone in their classroom. I just want to be careful, and I'm just throwing this all out there, right? So all of a sudden now, Renee and I are, no one's walking around with our cell phones at school, right? And as opposed to everyone else is not having their cell phones, so I'm just putting stuff that we just all need to.
Is that equitable if we're allowing the kids to use their cell phones as their calculator? Where, you don't want to do bring your own device, because it's inequitable, because some kids have a night like.
Hundred dollars, I'm just saying.
But I'm just saying, I took away my child's cellphone for an entire year. And it became a problem, because it was, they needed it.
Yeah, but there's, I mean, their cellphone calculator, like, apps on the computer as well.
Right, well, I just, having had a child.
Yeah, they have to buy it, I had to buy a scientific calculator, yeah.
He had to buy his own calculator.
That's what I mean.
They all have to buy an own calculator.
That's what I mean, but if we're now saying we're going to, I think that the comment was, if we're now going, just, it's, again, it's a budgetary thing, right?
There were smartphones here when he was here.
No, but if we're now going to, everybody has their school device, does everybody, it's just a question, right? Do we now then have, is that now another supply, the scientific calculator? It's just a question, right? Yeah, I had to buy my daughter's first calculator too.
Hundred-dollar calculator, fourteen-dollar.
Yeah, well, nobody's buying fourteen hundred dollars, everyone's on a plan, you know what I mean? So, um, but you know, these are all, this is, I'm just, the reason why I bring this up is not even to, you know, my personal feelings is I would love to have my phone. That being said, I would also love not to have my phone, but I don't know how many people would, in this room, would like me not to have my phone all day. I wouldn't get half as much done, just another thing to think about. So we just, you know, these are all pieces, right? I mean, you know, because they are tools, right?
And the other part is, you want to look at some of these districts, I'm so sorry, is.
Would you just move?
For adults, so are we going to, teachers walking around with their phones, right? Ministers walking around with their phones, so we're saying to our kids, you're not going to, no phones are allowed, right? And then all of a sudden, so I'm just throwing stuff out there, right?
But we know that the danger, the negative impacts of smartphones.
Even to adults?
Eliminates, no, dies off sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. It's elementary school and middle, middle school especially, where this is just devastating young people. That's the part we have to stay focused on. All this other conversation about is fine, but the reality is, we have kids in sixth and seventh and eighth grade, we're burning them songs, who are feeling lost and abandoned and abused by their peers, because they live their lives in this imaginary world of social media.
But it's done mostly at home, and that's where we're, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, that's where we're at, right? Even those elementary pieces that I'm gathering, right? Those pieces happened at home, a lot of the devastation, that happens at home. So I think this educating, the families piece comes right back to that, because we can't control that. Even if we say, right now, we say no cell phones in here. They're not, you know, they are doing things, and their parents are communicating to them, and all kinds of things that are happening on their phones in here, but technically, they're not supposed to have them. They're not having them in front of us, right? So if we, so, so many of the pieces that is happening with social media and the cell phones is happening outside of the school building. You know? So that's, that's the big, that's, that's, that's really where, it is a cultural. Well, I think it's a cultural piece too, right? And how do we, you know, continue to, you know, but.
I think that's where this new norms advisory board could come into handy, just educating, getting parents, teachers, whoever, on board with just, um, educating, because it is at home.
One of my favorite lines from the anxious generation book is, standing on whales fishing for meals. And that sometimes it feels like what we do in public education. Let's have a meeting, so.
As long as we know we're not going to be able to do this like tomorrow, right? It's going to take us time, right? And we're going to need to get people to buy into this. As long as we continue to have like a timeline of what our expectations are, and what do we want to do as well.
Just a question of reference I would have, and this is just a real, a real question, just on subcommittees and then going to school committee and how that works. Because it seems like a lot of these next steps seems pretty large, right? And so to me, it seems like it has to go to more of a conversation of the school committee of, I don't know. So I don't, before I say, I guess that's just to put that out there for everybody, I don't know. You know, you guys, the school committee members would be able to speak best to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think I wanted to start the conversation officially. Um, usually a lot of subcommittee meetings will do that, and then bring it back to the committee. Um, you know, I think a forum would probably be the best place to really kick-start it off and have a speaker, and have people from different districts coming in and talk. So there's a base to that, then that forum, not just people coming in with their preconceived thoughts. Um, but yeah, I mean, ultimately, it will need to be a policy voted on by the committee, and we're not the policy subcommittee, you know? So again, this is going to be a joint effort, but ultimately, the school committee has to vote on that policy. So, um, and it's something that we have to do, and so, and that's why.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you said about a forum and, and thinking about the fact that it has to kind of go, these conversations need to start happening with the whole school committee. Depending what that agenda looks like, right? We can get people in for those meetings, we've seen, right? So, and now people are, you know, being more attentive to those agendas. So that may be, you know, I, I would just encourage, you know, the subcommittee to maybe think about that with the whole, you know, bring, bring that back to the other members of the school committee. That, that wouldn't be a bad idea to at least, and even if it's a limited time, right? So it's a, you know, a fifteen, twenty-minute forum, however you want, or if it's a presenter, for whatever that might look like. That is an opportunity, that time, and those school committee meetings do end up getting additional traction, right? Later, even more so than just a regular recorded meeting. So just something to think about.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, absolutely, I think, you know, well, as Al mentioned, like the timing is important, you know? I mean, for the elementary level, at least after-school sports tend to go into the evening. So that has to be looked at, the timing of it. But yeah, recorded and then people viewing it after.
And right now, it does seem like our communities are really watching those meetings even after the fact, right? It looks like you go on YouTube and you see the, the amount of views. So that would be encouraging, I would think, at least as far as for getting the word out more.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. So I think maybe, maybe we can reach out to different districts and maybe work with you too, Kara, about the information that you have. And I know on the toolkit, they mentioned different schools within Massachusetts that had each of the different policies within that. And then we can bring that back and talk to the full committee as well.
I'd be interested to hear what Lisa Brockton did a year leading into it. I'd be interested to hear what that entails. And maybe that's something like, it's a slow process, but maybe that's something that we can start.
And maybe that's just a collaborative partnership that we establish with them. You know, what were your barriers, what were your obstacles? What worked, what evidence do you have that you could potentially share with us as we're thinking about doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think like the phone-free lunch at Refresh Day was kind of dipping, dipping the toe into that too.
And to go off of what Renee was saying earlier, I'd like to know what additional financial costs came from it.
Yes.
I just feel like that's gonna be something that, that they want to know, right? Like they meaning all of our stakeholders, right? Because budget is such a-
You don't want to find that out by accident at the end.
Yeah, that's such a big piece right now, right? For all districts, but especially ours right now, right? So I just feel like knowing what that looks like, what does it really look? We have ideas in our head, but what does that really look like, I think would be important. And again, what, what Al had mentioned, it really does ring true. Like the fact that school committees make these policies, us reaching out to personnel, we're gonna get a different view. The fact is, is the school committee needs to vote on these things. So school committee members reaching out to other district school committee, to me, you're gonna get, you're gonna get the information, I think, that you want rather than us reaching out to administrators or staff, you know what I mean? It's gonna be different information. And at the end of the day, the policy needs to be voted on within the committee, right? So, that might be helpful.
Yeah, so we can do that. Yep, absolutely.
And we're, I mean, I'm certainly willing to reach out to other, I'm just saying that that it's just gonna look different, I think.
Well, we'll start to look and then we'll bring back-
And then Kara, if you're able to share whatever notes, that's why I, you know, Kara had, had expressed interest. So I thought this was great on a lot of fronts.
Hundred percent.
Because she has been to some of these PD sessions and, and already got some information, so thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I mean, I was trying to invite as many people as possible.
I appreciate it.
Because everyone has all different perspectives and different knowledge and, you know? I know, you know, I'm glad you came too, because I know you had sent me a lot of data last year when we started to kind of talk about this. All right, I don't, does anyone want to say anything else about those topics? I'm gonna just shift very briefly. And this might be more dabbling, I know it's eleven of two. But so there was some mention of organizational cultural surveys for the staff, the parent and the admin slash school committee levels. And I know Lisa had forwarded me information-
Yeah, she did.
Which I hadn't shared with you, so I'll just say it. So it was Educational Commonwealth Project.
Yes, that is, that is true. That is somebody that I had found through a job alike last year. And the cool thing about them is they're free and it's a research facility that has very valid results. But however, because we're gonna be doing strategic planning, much of the surveying that we're gonna be doing through that avenue is similar. So we've asked ECP to hold off till next year. So we're actually not working with them this year. But we are gonna be doing some surveys through the-
Strategic plan.
Planning process.
So that's why, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I got a call on my phone.
No, it's fine. No, 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 that's fine. Well, you're all running things right now too.
So yes, the strategic-
So with this strategic planning then, I guess, what, because I don't-
They'll survey everybody. They'll survey the community, they'll survey teachers, they'll survey students, parents, administrators. They'll do communities in both Berlin and Boston, they'll bring them all in, neutral and survey every single thing about culture, climate, community, all of that pieces take place. I just fortunately, we did one in Hampton Willburn right before I left. I think that was my, my final gift I gave to superintendent there. It, it does all of it and caught, brings it all together, is that word a little far? Brings it all together, brings all that data together. And it's really powerful that this way then, when you're writing a strategic plan, it's just not what the administration believes, it's what the whole community buys into us also. So they really do an incredible job surveying. A lot of night meetings, we bring families in to, not even in the schools, they bring them to top halls and they get, they'll, they'll do the select boards, they'll bring them in, they interview them all and, or I should say, survey them all and get some data. They do what's called SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And they'll do that with all those groups as well too. So that's the work Sally and I have already met with them.
That's, see, that's why I wanted to call everyone. All right, that's lovely. So what is the timeline of that then?
Wait to see what happens on May fifth. As soon as the budget's passed, then we should be in the better spot. So we've been holding them off, waiting till May fifth.
Okay, but you have a company that-
All lined up and ready to go.
That's beautiful.
She presented, she-
Yeah, she did, actually, she presented, I think in February.
Principles, I think, as well too, right?
It was in January or February, yeah. She did, February twelfth, I think.
You're on a gentleman.
Okay, that was a long time ago, Al.
And for what it's worth, she's seen the ECP surveys and she feels that what she has is even better, so.
Okay, awesome. That's wonderful. I had forgotten about that presentation, so that's wonderfully not an issue anymore. Great. And then just very briefly, because I know we have eight more minutes, just kind of to put brainstorming seed into people's heads on how to better utilize, mobilize or match the community and parent resources with teacher and classroom needs. As we all know, our budget is very tight. And so it might not always present teachers with the supplies or the knowledge or the energy to do enrichment activities. And so, you know, I think it's up to certain parents or community members to reach out and say, hey, do you guys want to do something? And, but then I feel like there's so many community members and parents that have different talents or different, you know, interests that they could come in and do these projects, but it might not align with, you know, what, what science, you know, thing that they're working on for the frameworks. And I know there's the barrier too of sizable donations need to be voted upon by the school committee. And so, it's kind of, again, I'm just brainstorming, like what, on our new website, like what could we put in place that someone could donate fifty dollars for this, for second grade science? And it generate, you know, yes, it is now your money to do with what you want, not mine. I didn't launder, you know, launder it, whatever, launder money. That to then facilitate quickly that use in those classrooms. And I don't know, it's, so I, you know, as a parent, as a school committee member, like I want kids to enjoy math, to enjoy science, to enjoy these things. And if it's so dry, they're not going to. And there's so many opportunities for parents to donate, you know, like potatoes and dirt for them to grow in classrooms and, you know, to make it interesting for the kids to get into it. So I just, you know, all these brilliant minds here at one table, I just wanted to see what thoughts and like to mull things over to see how we could request resources, like these are the different science, I forget the words, but you know, like the curriculum that we need to touch upon in second grade, these are the big things. You know, anyone want to volunteer to come in and do something or donate materials or somehow connect like that wish list with the community and parents to, to make things happen for the kids.
I like that idea. Right now, how we do that, we have parents calling all the time wanting to donate. The, like, we have a fifth grade classroom, the grade is having an architect come in, a parent, to teach them math and, you know, all that coming up right before Math MCAS, which is amazing. It's a little review, they've, they've talked, they've done it with the teachers. So that's how they're doing that. We've had other parents come in for fourth grade to talk, to make, and I can't think of the word, but they're making appendages, but not appendages. What were they making, what am I thinking, when they, when they, the kids made a handprint and they-
Casting?
Oh, the molds, the-
Yes, they were making like, ah, she didn't even know the word, it's the end of the day. But anyway, they came in and taught them that the kids were so, and that parent brought in her own supply. So it wasn't like a big donation, but she brought it in, she worked with them with the teachers. Right now, they do it by grade level, so if there's a way to do that, because parents call all the time and I always try to push it back to say, you know, talk to your child's teacher, what do they want? So they kind of do it that way. But if there's a way for that, I mean, it's easy for art, we just send them to Mrs. Covens. But I don't know how you do it, but I'm just like, talk to the teachers, what do you want to bring in? But there's a lot of people that, that want to donate. And I know here at the middle high, the PTO always reaches out at the beginning of the year to the teachers, you know? But as far as parent resource coming in, it just looks a lot different, right? At the elementary than the middle high, because kids don't always want their parents. But yeah, I mean, I, the, you know, some districts have those like, you know, wish list pieces. But sometimes teachers don't know what they even want until a parent may reach out and say, hey, you know, I did such and such on this and it wouldn't, you know, even if they don't want to come in and physically present it or the materials, would you be interested? So yeah, I mean, that just that community, I think sometimes parents are, whatever, like afraid, you know, like, but I think that's great to have that communication and facilitate that more, again.
You're not really blasting out when you do it.
Yeah.
We'll encourage other people to volunteer.
Yeah. The word is prosody.
I think that's the way to do it, like Cindy's doing it. I, I just want us to be careful and I wouldn't be in this role if I didn't say this. There's some families that we have to be mindful of, right? That don't have the opportunity, any extra, right? There's a lot going on, we're finding more and more situations and I'm not speaking for our council to say about what we're hearing these conversations happen in our communities as well too. So I just want us to be mindful of that. Because there's some families that don't have that extra money now, right? That things are taking place. So I don't want it to become, Renee's, Renee's family can bring something in, but my family can't bring something in right now. So I just, just, I have to just put that out there to be mindful.
Even if it's intellectually sharing, you know, like taking a kid out on a nature walk and sharing that knowledge is, is a resource of a parent or a community member.
Freeze it that way, it's, I just don't want to think it's just-
Financial, a hundred percent, yeah.
I just, I just had to say this.
No, 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 absolutely, absolutely. So, so yeah, so I don't know if, if there's some way to, even in like the newsletters, have links like second grade needs or third grade needs or wish list or upcoming lessons or share your knowledge just to get it more out, because I feel like parents are, and community members are untapped resources that do want to help, but not always sure how to. And maybe that's through the PTOs too, like when the PTO reaches out and says, what do you guys need? I feel like maybe I don't know, then it just kind of sits there and, and they deal with it, but it doesn't get distributed to the wider parent community.
Yeah, and I think it's just a kind of a bit of an age-old problem where the, you know, the involvement of the parents is so much more at the under level, right? Like the PTOs had, oh, there's hardly any people that show up for the PTO meeting unfortunately here. But the group that we have is great. And when there's a specific need, the parents come in. Do you know what I mean? So like providing those specific opportunities really helps.
Yeah. Asking for something as opposed to like a broad, no one responds to a broad.
Yeah, it, yeah, but I think it's great, I think we have wonderful communities here. We're so, you know, we're very, very fortunate. And again, it's not always about the monetary donations, you know, so.
There's also opportunities that, that they have in Worcester and Hampton Willburn where the PTOs all get together, right? And they pooled so many together and what they did is that the teachers write grants, right? So they would write a grant, I know we do it sometimes in some, some of our smaller schools, but it was a whole program they brought. Teachers from either the middle school, the elementary, high school wrote a grant and this is what they wanted. And this group of people that was comprised of elementary, middle and high school parents got together, read the, read the grants and funded the money that way. So it's not just, I'm giving you money here, but I'm giving you money for a specific project. And when you bought stuff like that, that stayed in the district, right? So if I bought an aquarium because I was doing that, that, that was part of the district, not part of Mrs. Smith's things as well, so.
Yeah, I know the Boylston Education Collaborative does that.
Yeah, and I think Berlin does too, don't they?
Lake does as well.
Do you guys do it?
Differently, it's done differently. Parents take a much more active role in terms of providing services, providing enrichment opportunities. And historically, they've always done that.
Is the grant city at Bolson, is that where it is? I know I just saw that one as well.
Yes, and they have little stickers they put on right now because those ride-on animals are staying at Boylston. You know, it's gonna ride you down the road. Not I would like.
Not for you, John. It doesn't say anything about Bolson, it says not for John.
I do have a STEAM committee that's composed of several parents who work in scientific areas around Worcester and they're very enthusiastic, so I mean, that's certainly somebody I could talk to about spreading the word about that for here.
Yeah, or even people that like maybe can't attend the meetings but would love to be, you know, like this is who I am, please, yeah. Yeah.
Because it was through those parents that we were able to get Victor Ambrose, for instance, you know, so.
Incredible opportunity.
I just want, I know people, at present times, someone's gonna help you with this. The teachers used to be able to write, and I don't think we do it in this district where you could write a grant, right? And put it up on, anybody?
Teachers-
Oh, GoFundMe.
No, not GoFundMe, teacher paid teacher?
No, there's another one.
GoFundMe.
And we were told we're not allowed to do that.
Yeah. But years ago, there was a separate platform too, just specifically for teachers.
Just for teachers.
So, so that's why I was thinking maybe something within our own district.
What do we call that?
Now you're gonna make me look up.
Cindy, what was that called?
It's not teachers paid teachers.
It's not, not teachers. It was just for teachers. And so I remember like my mother, my sister-
Donors choose.
What's that?
Donors choose.
Donors choose.
Another one though, too.
Donors choose. And that was just for teachers and, and people could help. You could put two dollars in, you could put ten dollars in, right? And so it got to your, your goal. We don't do that in this district?
We were told not to.
Yeah.
We were advised that it was not a safe platform.
Okay.
So, thinking about that, but it's a wonderful opportunity to connect people with teacher needs